Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this meeting of the Outer North East Community Committee. My name is councillor Norma Harrington and I'll be chairing today's meeting. The Outer North East Community Committee covers All Woodley, Harewood and Weatherby wards, and is a committee where ward councillors have an opportunity to discuss and make decisions about services and priorities for the local area, and also consider funding applications for local community projects and youth activities. Could I now invite members of the committee and then officers to introduce themselves? I'll start going from Linda that way, please.
Good evening, everybody. Linda Richards, Weatherby Ward councillor.
Good evening, Neil Buckley, All Woodley Ward.
Hello, Ryan Stevenson, Harewood Ward.
Andy Burbek, Localities Programme Manager in the Safer Stronger Communities team.
Becky Murray, Influencing Travel Behaviour team.
Rosie Revel, Road Safety Team Leader.
Eleanor Jordan, Highways Maintenance Drainage Engineer.
Baz Ali, Highway Supervisor and Gully Service.
Good evening, Toby Russell-Clark to the committee.
Prithma Saru, Locals officer.
Thank you, Chair. Under Agenda Item Number One, there are no appeals against the refusal of inspection of documents. Under Item Number Two, there are no items which require the exclusion of the press or the public. Under Item Number Three, there were two late items submitted with agreement from the Chair. A pack containing the reports for Item Nine, Gullies Update, and Item Twelve, Finance Report, were circulated to members in advance of the meeting. Under Agenda Item Number Four, apologies for absence have been received from Councillor Harrend and Councillor Lamb, and I believe Councillor First, Councillor Robinson and Councillor Cohen are on the way. Under Agenda Item Number Five, can I ask members to declare any interests? Thank you. And then we've got Agenda Item Six is the open forum, and I'm unaware of any proposed items of business for the open forum. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Toby. Bearing in mind that we are at this current moment in time not quorum it until one of our colleagues arrives, I propose to move the minutes and the matters arising further down the agenda. So I'd like to move to Agenda Item Number Nine, which is the Gullies Update from Baz and Eleanor. Thank you.
You'll have to bear with me, I've not attended a meeting like this before. You should all have a copy of the report that I've prepared. Brilliant. Okay, so we'll start with gullies first, as that's an easier subject. Because the gully service consists of twenty men that have no office skills, if these gentlemen contract COVID-19 in line with paper chairs, guidance, corporate guidance, they need to remain at home if they test positive for COVID-19. That is still in place. Thankfully, we've only had a couple of instances of that in the last six months, so that hasn't been a huge issue for our service. Staffing wise, we currently have one vacancy with one driver on long term sick. As the vacancy is an attendant vacancy, that equates to one team. So in light of the current financial situation, the council has found itself in. It makes sense to just stand that team whilst the driver continues to be on long term sick. So that means we are currently working at ninety percent capacity. With regard to the cyclical clean, we are ten months into the fourth clean, which commenced back in 2016. The fourth cycle started in May last year and we are halfway through cleaning the gullies within the Leeds district. Unfortunately, none of the three wards that are represented this evening have had their fourth cyclical clean. So the figures that I will be talking through depict how each ward ended the third cycle. Moving on to software, gully cleansing is managed completely electronically. We left paper recording back in 2016. And there's been an ongoing project with our IT team leading, looking at finding a single piece of software that does four jobs in one. So just to make that a bit clearer, within highways and transportation, four different pieces of software have been used that aren't compatible with each other, which means there's a bit of duplication and it's quite difficult to find things out without having to go to those particular teams direct. So trying to A, save money and B, do some drone work in and have one system in place that does everything. That piece of software has been found and is called AMX. And gully cleansing is one of the first teams to move over to that new piece of software, for which the schedule is May 2023. This means that we will be losing our Carbon Tech Gully Smart software, which has been incredibly reliable and very easy to use since 2016, and is one of the reasons why our success story is so great. So there's a little, there's a little bit of hesitation there. But undoubtedly, it will mean that there will be some teething problems as we get to grips with the new software. But we will have Carbon Tech running alongside that new software as it beds in. But we just ask for your patience during the transition period. So moving on to Cycle Four, we are expecting to be servicing the gullies in the Outer North East area on the following schedule. We will be in All Woodley around July, August later this year, which immediately Weatherby will follow on from, so we'll go from All Woodley straight into Weatherby. And Harewood is actually scheduled to be serviced sooner than that, next month or May. We ask that councillors, members can help us in any way possible by asking your residents on any of your social media platforms just to be mindful that the tankers will be in the area and to bear in mind where they park. We're not, the crews are really good at getting into the tricky locations, but unfortunately, they can't lift cars out of the way. So if those types of things can be brought, if we can bear that in mind when we are in the area, that will mean that your access figures, which I'm about to talk about, will be even better than they currently are. So moving into actual figures, you've all got tables and charts. I won't go into them in a lot of details, but at present, there were 4,737 gullies in All Woodley. And at the end of the third cycle, ninety-seven point four one percent of those were operational and working. We had, it's quite difficult to tell because this is in black and white, but one point not nine percent, which equates to fifty-three gullies of those 4,737, what we call non-runners and need further work. And we weren't able to access one point five percent, which is less than a hundred, which isn't bad at all. Moving on to Harewood, slightly less gullies, even though it's a much bigger area, 4,382 gullies. Again, another really high operational figure of ninety-five point one four percent. Three point seven six percent of gullies are marked as non-runners, as councillor Robinson well know. We've got some of those in a work crew waiting for further works. And the access figure is lower, so blocked access as a result of parked cars is one point one percent. That's to be expected with the amount of country roads. And then finally, we've got Weatherby, which has the highest number of gullies of the three wards, 4,857. Again, a really good operational figure of ninety-six point five four percent. Two point two four percent of those are non-runners, which equates to eighty-eight gullies. And one point two one percent of gullies we weren't able to access, again, that's less than, well under a hundred gullies. One of the things that I wanted to talk today about is the difference in blinded and blocked gullies. Now, I wanted to talk about this, not because I want, I want members or residents to take it upon themselves to make sure that requests are sent to the right department. At the end of the day, I fully appreciate that members of the public want to raise a request with Leeds City Council and then it be passed to the relevant department. But if things are passed to the right department in the first instance, this saves a lot of time and effort on everybody's part. And one of the biggest issues that we have in gullies is identifying what's actually a sweeping issue and what's a blocked gully. So there's a number of photos. I will send this report to you electronically so that you can see them in colour. But a blinded gully is a gully that has the tritus sitting on top of the lid that stops surface water from gaining access to the gully pot. That causes surface watering ponding. That is usually a short term issue. But it tends to be our team that gets those reports, and it's not actually a blocked gully. And there's not, we will go out and we will remove the detritus, but whilst the silt and the litter and the leaves still in place on that road, it will continue to happen. So when we find a blinded gully, this is a sweeping issue. And ideally, those requests need to be sent to the Environment Service for a road sweeper to attend. So that's one instance of a blinded gully. Another instance of a blinded gully on the opposite page is where so, and the tritus sits in the gaps of the grate, again, blinding the gully and stopping water from going through. Now, sometimes only a few of the holes in the grate will be blocked. Again, it's a sweeping issue and you'll be able to see into the gully that the gully is actually working. And again, it needs a sweeper to come along and clean. It's not value for money sending a two man team in a tanker to clean a grate when we have other teams who, whose primary responsibility is to do that. And it's a diversion away from what we should be doing, our main task. So that's what a blinded gully looks like. There's another example of one on the, on the next page. Sorry, I should have put page numbers on there. So if you turn to this photo, which is a square grate, this is a blocked gully and I want to know about this. This is definitely our bread and butter. You can see from the photo that the silt sits below the grate and the pot is blocked. And that is absolutely our jurisdiction and our remit. Lastly, you might well find a gully or a manhole surcharging. It looks like a pretty waterfront like that. It might not be quite as evident as that, but that's the best. I know, yeah, that's the best evidence of a, that's a manhole that's surcharging in the middle of the road. Now, this is evidence that the carrier drain that that manhole serves has a blockage which is resulting in surface water or sewage, depending on what type of drain it is, backing up and escaping from the drain through the nearest exit, which in this example is the manhole. We do have a small number of highway drains in the authority. So unfortunately, I can't sit here and say, if you see a surcharging manhole, report it to Yorkshire Water. It's not that simple, unfortunately. I wish it was. But we are absolutely not responsible for any combined or foul sewage which carries sewage. So if you smell or see sewage, it's a Yorkshire Water asset that needs attention. Now, some people don't understand how we can be absolute resolute that if it's a gully that's surcharging, how we know it's not the gully that's blocked. And the answer to that is that if it was a gully connection to the carrier drain that had the blockage, then that would essentially act as a plug, as barrier in between the gully pot and the sewer. And water from the carrier drain would not be able to travel back through. So a surcharging gully is a sign that the gully and the connection is actually working. It's just working in the opposite direction to how we want it to work. I'm going to talk about Yorkshire Water in the drainage update, which I'm about to commence. So unfortunately, Leeds City Council has absolutely no jurisdiction with the Water Authority. Legislation dictates that Yorkshire Water have a statutory right to place apparatus in the highway and are wholly responsible for maintaining that asset. I just want to make it known that as a team, the gully cleansing team, we are not able to carry sewage in our tankers because you need a waste carrier's licence and we don't have one. We also don't have the facilities to dispose of waste correctly or safely. Therefore, we would never get involved with any kind of sewage issue. We're seeing more and more drainage issues under the road for three main reasons. First of all, the weather is becoming more extreme with global warming and we're experiencing heavy downpours whereby we can receive a month's worth of rainfall in an hour. The drainage system simply isn't designed to cope with this type of volume in such a short space of time and the water has nowhere to go, therefore it's held on the highway. In loose circumstances, the ponding usually starts to subside as the rain stops and it will gradually run away by its own accord. The second reason is that most of the drains in Leeds were laid in the Victorian era and were designed to service a fraction of the houses and roads that the city now owns. They simply aren't capable of servicing the number of properties that are connected to them. This is a national problem, not just affecting us in Leeds, it's affecting the entire country. The only real starting solution would be for all drainage infrastructure to be increased in size. Also to have, to ensure that the drainage system, certainly the surface water system, is all connected and has somewhere to out for. The drainage network which feeds into the main sewers would be the last part of this chain to be resolved, not the first, quite rightly. And there would need to be a major national government drive and investment to scratch the surface, assuming that there is capacity in the ground itself. So it's a huge issue, one I'm not quite sure how we're going to solve. And the third reason we're seeing more issues with the drains is that we are filling, we as residents are filling our sewers with items that are not biodegradable, which form most of the blockages. These are most notably fat and oil and baby wipes. I must stress that these things should not be poured down sinks or tipped into gullies or flushed down toilet. I'd also just like to say that gully pots are not rubbish things. You'd be surprised what we pull out of the gullies. We've had toasters, scooters, children's toys, microwaves. I mean, the effort to actually lift the grate must be greater than just putting it in a wheelie bin, but anyway. Whenever there's an issue with a Yorkshire Water asset, you are more likely to see faster action if residents report the issue directly to the Water Authority than you are reporting it to Leeds City Council than if an officer reports it second hand. This is because residents are paying customers of Yorkshire Water and they have first hand knowledge of the incident, including an accurate location and details of what has happened or is happening. By all means, we are happy to report issues through and we can do that, but faster action will occur if incidents are reported directly. We unfortunately don't have named contacts within the Yorkshire Authority. So if we raise a request to go and deal with an issue, we have to ring the call centre, just like the residents do. This is something that we're trying to work on. So in terms of ward updates for drainage, and I'm going to put my head down here. In All Woodley, we've got King Lane, and ongoing drainage issues following the development at the golf course at the very top of King Lane. Planning and mineral enforcement and keeping pressure on the golf course to use wheel washing facilities for all wagons exiting site and employ a sweeper on a regular basis. All wagons should be exiting the site and travelling north towards Bram Hope and not down King Lane into All Woodley. The traffic department within highways and transportation awaiting recent traffic survey results to be published. And then one of my colleague, Chris Potter, will review whether a temporary or permanent restriction can be put in place along this stretch of road. It's understood that the filter drain installed in 2020 was working well. Is this correct? Yeah? Good. Good. I'm glad to hear it was working. So this will be restored once we're confident it won't be churned up by continuing HGV presence along this stretch of road. In Harewood, we have the ponding forming on the A58 Badsey next to the Stone Truss. And this is ongoing. Further surveys and site visits are required because until today, we haven't had, we've had quite a dry start to 2023. I don't want to say that too loudly. And so we really need to see this in situ in the rain to get a better idea of exactly what's happening. But, and this is, the further surveys are being planned for the beginning of the next financial year. And in Weatherby, we've got Weatherby Bridge. Now, this is actually an asset that belongs to the Bridges Team. So trying to resolve the issue with regard to ponding on the actual bridge itself doesn't fall to me, unfortunately. Having said that, a principal inspection of the actual bridge is due to be undertaken this year and the road surface of the bridge itself is due to be replaced and resurfaced in the next financial year, 2024 or 2025. The ongoing flooding that we're experiencing on Boston Road at the Wattlestake End, where we have a very swollen swale. Asset management have concluded that they believe that the swale is actually a Leeds City Council flood risk feature, which is good news on one hand because it means we can deal with that in house rather than trying to liaise with highways, sorry, national highways. So now there are discussions between the drainage team and flood risk management investigations as to whose remit it would be to carry out the relevant remedial works. They will reach a conclusion shortly and then those works to dig this whale out can take place. York Road Junction with Morrison's and next to the petrol station. Now, this area, I am aware that we have a non-running gully to the west of the Tatterton Lodge entrance and that is in a work crew waiting to be done. That will be done in the next financial year. The rest of that junction will be looked at with the Dayton Road scheme. But there is a section of York Road that's not a public highway outside the houses opposite the petrol station. That's not, that's not highways. It may well be housing, I'm not sure. Yeah, may well be housing.
It's that they are social housing and it's the issue that the, when the drainage was laid, since then, it's always flooded into their, a little bit, and it's come up to their front doors as well. So that's why they're not happy.
So we're saying that the water from the highway is flooding that. Okay, that changes things slightly. Okay, all right. Okay, I'll bear that in mind. Okay. Dayton Road. The issues with Dayton Road have, are subject to funding. However, we've decided in the drainage team that we're going to undertake a second, more detailed and concise survey of the gullies and their connections. We will also survey the asset that they are connected to, to try and get some proof. So that's ongoing. The survey will happen in the next couple of weeks. And then the bottom of Spaffeth Hill puzzles me. There are no non-running gullies at the bottom of Spaffeth Hill. We needed to undertake a site visit in rain to really understand what the issues are at this location. A full survey was completed before COVID, which showed no issues. And that's me done. Any questions?
Thank you, Eleanor. Any questions, gentlemen and lady?
Thank you, Chair. And thank you, Eleanor, for that very concise report. Just got a couple of queries. You mentioned that the software had been replaced and that the old software was extremely good and very reliable. So why was it replaced? That's the first question. And the second one was this business of the Yorkshire Water Call Centre. It seems to me really terrible that you've got to go through as like a normal member of the public. And I would just say that if we can do anything at all to push that forward, to give you a dedicated name or some description, I think we'd be happy to do that. I've had dealings with Yorkshire Water in the past on different matters and they are difficult. And then finally, could you just, I've obviously misheard, but connection excavation. Could you just explain that to me, please? Thank you.
Sorry, my memory is like a soft, soft to write things down. Carbon Tech. That question is really above my pay grade. It's, the council is under severe financial crisis, as you all know. It's been agreed by the IT team to review all of the software that we use. And it was highlighted that within highways and transportation, we had a number of different software that didn't talk to each other and resulted in more time consuming tasks trying to get information. So the idea was to try and find one step piece of software that will do the job for others will do and therefore save money, spend money wisely, as in line with the council values. I've been assured that this piece of software, AMX, can be tailored and modelled to be as good as Carbon Tech. And we are not going to stand it off until we're happy. Okay. Number two, Yorkshire Water contacts. I think the issue here is that they, very similar to Leeds City Council, need to have audit trails. And therefore, if people start cutting out the contact centre and going directly to officers, things aren't recorded in the correct things aren't recorded in the correct way. This is how we advocate things are recorded in, within the council. So when there's a problem in the road, we do advise members of the public to contact the contact centre, either through uh by making a telephone call or by using the internet, um our website to log calls correctly, so that we have an audit trail of when we received the job and how it's been um actioned. Now, obviously, we have fast-track passages for, for you to make referrals direct to us. And yes, it would make sense for the local authority, water authority, to have those as well. But unfortunately, they don't. Whether it's because of high turnover of staff, I don't know. We have in the last week acquired a direct contact um following a piece of work that we did outside of the O N E's area. Um and contact has been made with a, an area manager. So that's quite promising and I will be um communicating with him. He has told us that we can go straight to him, but obviously he's an area manager. And this area was Seacraft, well, not a million miles away. Um so um that's some dialogue and con- conversations that we, that might prove promising for some direct contact. But I welcome any involvement from yourselves. If you have, if you have ways and means, I, I'd be very, very grateful. Very grateful. Uh connection excavations, uh back to gullies. Um a connection excavation means that we've identified, so if you envisage a gully pot at the side of the road, that has a connection to usually a sewer. In more rural locations, of which there are a few in All Woodley, that connection might lead to a ditch or it might lead to a soakaway. But the majority of the time, gullies are connected to a carrier drain, be that a Yorkshire Water asset predominantly, or possibly a highway drain. A connection excavation identifies that that connection has collapsed. And that needs an excavation, so digging a hole in the road to rectify, which requires permits, traffic management, et cetera, et cetera. Um In gullies, there's me and Baz. In drainage, there's me and Barry Taylor. So we're both very small teams. We do have limited budgets. We do what we can. Um but yeah, we, we are trying to get through um the non-runners um best way we can.
Okay. Thank you, Eleanor. Um I'll take Ryan and then Linda and then Dan. Thank you.
Hi, just a quick question regarding the A fifty eight at, at Bardsy. So um yeah, it is a problem at the, the location you mentioned, um where the trough is. But we also have really bad um water um gathering at the junction of Keswick Lane. So hundred yards further towards Wetherby. Um so effectively, all the water um flows down Rigton Bank when it's, when it's wet and it comes at a pace and then also logs on, on it creates a real issue there. So um if you're not already looking at that, uh when you're on site looking at the trough. I know my colleague, councillor Robinson. Oh, I forgot you. Oh, yes, councillor. I was saying that in case, I've forgotten councillor Robinson was here. Um you might be already on it, but it's worth flagging because it's a significant issue. But I'll let councillor Robinson recover.
I said, thank you, Chair. Either it's raining outside or there's another gully you need to fix there, Eleanor. Um the, I, councillor Simonsen's entirely right. I think Keswick Lane's a, a bit of an issue as well. And it feels like the two of them are interconnected. I'm sure that Anna will come to say a little bit about that. We've done some, some excavation work has happened. We've done a couple of site meetings, uh and there's some work for the parish council to do. Um and I'm not going to jump the queue on questions here, Chair, but I think that there's a role for parish councils to be in this as well. And, and um probably going to preclude some of my question when it comes.
Just saying. Councillor Cohen. Oh, sorry, Linda. Councillor.
I know my place. Um yeah, this is a very simple one as well. Uh you've talked about the schedules for the um when the tankers are going to be there. So that says August, September. That's two months. Uh can you be any more specific, even in a generic area? We're coming to Bramham or we're going to another village, because that would help us in the non-shifting of cars scenario.
No. I'll explain. So how many gullies did I say there were? Lots, lots, lots. So there's four thousand eight hundred and fifty seven gullies in Wetherby. We have four teams that will cover your area. So what usually happens is I split, I might split. I will give one team Boston Spar, I will give one team Clifford and Bramham, and I'll split Wetherby into two, which will include Collingham and um, no, it won't. That's Harewood, isn't it? But so I split Wetherby into two. And so those four teams will work on their packages. And the way it worked in gully cleansing is that the men who actually carry out the work have a lot more local knowledge than I do. And they know when is best to do this street, this street. They know that there's a school there, they need to avoid that during school hours. They know that these roads need to be done on a weekend. It's very difficult to give you a, a ball point figure of when we might be in specific places, sorry.
It's not a question of sorry, it's just a question of trying to help, because I'm well aware, I mean, I looked at the um Main Street in Bramham the other day. And obviously, no cars have moved when the sweepers have been down. You can see, because there is a, you know, a, a path and you can just see it. So it's going to be exactly the same for you. So the whole point is the issues will be addressed. If we can't shift at least some of the cars to enable your tankers to get near, because the problem in most of our villages now is they are so parked up. There is no access on any of the roads. So we're just trying to help. So even if you could give it us the night before and they've made the decision, if we bang it out on social media, you've got an even chance of hitting some of those people some of the time.
Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off there. Sorry. Baz has just said we can do that, so I leave that in his hands.
What we'll do is speak to the drivers beforehand, once we issue the packages and try to get an idea of when they will be in the area. And then we'll, we'll email that information to you.
Councillor Cohen.
Thank you, Chair. Um as first of all, apologies for my slight tardiness at my surgery overran today. As a resident who had a big problem. And so um Eleanor, thank you very much indeed for the very detailed report. But you spoke about um King Lane gates, uh as, as I'm now calling it. As, as, as all issues that are of national significance now become gates immediately after them.
It's not a bus gate.
It's not a bus gate. Um I, I know you share the concern that despite uh minerals uh being adamant that the developer is cleaning their wheels uh to within an inch of their rubber lives. Uh that is not the experience of uh those people who live on King Lane and the top part of All Woodley Lane, who are uh getting smeared uh with mud, uh smeared uh from uh vehicles both leaving the development, because they are not going the direction they are supposed to go. And you and I both know that. Um uh so thank you for all the work you're doing on that. And thank you for meeting me on site, uh which was really, really helpful. Um but, but I know myself, Neil and Lyn are really concerned to make sure we resolve this issue and that council enforcement really do step up to the plate on this.
As a local, a local resident, I, I can see the issues on King Lane firsthand on a daily basis. I can't speak for planning and minerals, because I don't work for them, unfortunately. But if we are able, um if, if traffic decide that the data is that we need to have restrictions in place to stop HGV coming along that stretch of road, I really believe that that will make a massive difference, because that road is not, it's not wide enough for those types of vehicles. And if we can eliminate that, then we can restore the filter drain, which was working and was having a, a positive impact in the area.
Just so, i- if we were able to, as you say, restrict those movements, and that, that would be a huge long-term advantage. And anything we can do to assist with that, you absolutely have, well, certainly my support, our support, there we go.
Yeah, I spoke to Chris Potter this morning about it and um he's well aware that this is a priority. So as soon as that survey data comes back, okay.
Thank you. Then we have Sam and then Matt.
Thank you very much, Chair. And I also apologize for being late, running over with a Waikia meeting. Um I just wanted to ask two particular uh questions. Uh one, I know that councillor Robinson's also going to come on to Thawna, but is to do with Thawna Lane and Sandhills. There's been a general question that Baz may know this patch, but basically we've had an ask by the environmental team. Is, is there any particular science behind the fact that there is a number of drains that are set back? You actually have a sort of oblong shape around them and they're set back from the road into the verge, rather than actually on the roadside itself. Um and so I would like to pick that up with you separately, as they're struggling to get them actually cleaned. Um and the second thing is that the reason why we came on to that discussion in a meeting was generally we were asking about how often, um other than when we bring them up, obviously, we have them cleansed every two years. But how often are flood sites or flood risk areas particularly looked at? And I'm particularly talking in places like Thawna and other villages in the area that don't have major uh have small backs, but don't have mainly just surface runoff that is the main risk of flooding, rather than actually any part of the water course. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor, for, you've actually um highlighted something I haven't covered, so thank you for that. Um currently, we service flood, what we term flood risk gullies every six months. Now, those are gullies that are highlighted on a map by the Environment Agency of areas that are likely to um suffer in what we call a one in thirty year flood. Now, these days, a one in thirty year flood is a once a year flood with the extreme weather that we're experiencing. So those gullies get serviced on a six monthly basis. One of the other things that we have running alongside this um software change is that we've actually managed to um get an additional feature added to Carbon Tech, which analyzes the data that we've captured over the last seven years. Um and put into place a risk-based cleansing schedule, whereby we go and service the gullies that need servicing more regularly than every two years. And we keep the gullies, for example, in locations such as where I live, which is a little cul-de-sac on a two yearly basis. So we will be attending the gullies that need it more regularly. I've actually got a meeting with Carbon Tech on Wednesday this week to um talk about how that um software change will come into play and how we manipulate it. So that's an ongoing piece of work.
Thank you. I'll bring separately the issue with Thawna Lane anyway, and we can deal with that, because the reason that Baz knows the patch, being our former team leader for the area. Um I, I just wanted to ask then, i- in terms of flood risk areas, is it mainly, if it's those identified by the environment agencies, is that based on data that's then coming in, in certain rainfall across the area repeatedly? Or is it something that's been set down for a number of years, or is it regularly being updated? Because I think the biggest thing we are facing more and more with the fact that we are having our villages expanding and our areas suburbs growing, is the fact we have more and more tarmac and more and more runoff. And that is the biggest complaint that we're getting and worry when it comes to any issues of flooding, particularly in our patch uh more generally, uh other than those obvious places like Collingham that have a major bet running through it. Thank you.
Unfortunately, it's the latter. So it's, it's entire that was, was gauged however many years ago. Um and it's, it, it's, it's a historic map. The Carbon Tech risk-based um exercise that we are doing will analyze um the gullies that we've visited most, the gullies that have had high level of shirt recordings, and then when we've, we've visited them, um the gullies on, on the arterial routes, et cetera, et cetera. Um those are the ones that we will be concentrating on. We're fully aware of the runoff issue. Um that's something that um we, we have to deal with frequently. Um so those are all things that we, we will be taking into consideration.
Councillor Robinson, thank you.
Thanks, Chair. I'll join the apologies for tardiness uh before we begin. Um three quick issues, if that's okay. Um the first is that, and I should acknowledge that previously Baz and Eleanor were working some night shifts, doing overtime out in some of our main roads, because it literally could not get into the program schedule without doing that. Which is a credit to the officers of this council and a credit to the two officers on the opposite um as well, who um have gone above and beyond, in my experience, to try and work with some of these issues. Uh first point is, you know, about engaging our parish councils. Uh I think many of them are great in terms of information that they can share back to us, but also should be aware of the work that's already ongoing as well and how we can forward programme that in. So how can we, whether it's through Tenner Parish Council Forum or other vehicles, work with you to make sure that we do that? The second is on new builds. Um you heard councillor Firth uh talk a little bit about this. Uh I appreciate that many of our villages were not designed for the number of houses and vehicles and things that are going on in them as, as they are today, particularly the gullies and the capacity that those gullies have to take. However, when we have new builds, we can start from scratch. Uh and we can put vast, uh bigger storm drains in and we can suggest that and go through the planning process uh as we do that. Are we engaged in that process? How engaged with planners? How are we feeding that in, particularly where we know there are difficult spots? And if it's not through yourselves, how can we as councillors help make that a little bit easier for you? Uh and third and final thing is, um within the report, it talks about traffic ma- traffic management cases. Um there's quite a few required in the Harewood Ward. Um and I appreciate that that's, as I've said, some of the challenges you've had to face in the past. What are we doing to work with people like the Cleaner Neighbourhoods team to make sure that they're out when those traffic management um cases are needed? And when the roads are closed, what are we doing to work with roads maintenance as well to try and make sure that that all doesn't come out of your budget firstly, because it is a limited budget and it's under stress and, and under a lot of pressure. Uh but so that we can limit the amount of closures that are on the roads, so that residents don't see that impact as often. And it's not the same road closed three times in quick succession. Thanks, Chair.
Okay, um how can we work with parish councillors? Um Oh, I think that ties in with um what we were talking about earlier, about um advertising um where possible, when we're going to be in the area. That's definitely one way they could help. Um and um in this very detailed, lengthy document, which, have you got one? Yeah, okay. Um I've talked about the differences between blinded gullies and block gullies and, and um not that I'm, I want residents to understand. I'm not trying to tell residents that they need to make sure they report issues correctly. But what I am trying to demonstrate is that if a sweeping issue is reported to environmental services, it will get the job done quicker rather than it coming to us and then it being forwarded on. Um time is precious for everybody and um we want to do a good job promptly. And one of the best ways to do that is to make sure that the issue is raised in the correct way. So um if parish councils could um when making referrals directly to either Baz or myself, if they could include as much detail as possible in the issues that they're experiencing with some photographs. You know, I love a good photograph and a map. Um that would be really appreciated. Um I'll have a think about what, how else they could um help and I'll, I'll come back to you um via email. Uh with the next one, oh, the new builds. I don't like saying this and I don't like saying it to you. But a live stream, yeah. Um but that's above me. Um I would like Um, I would like to think so. I would, we're maintenance, we deal with things that have been built. I would like to think that there's some consultation and planning factor in drainage, but I'd be guessing. Sorry, I couldn't have, I don't. Moving quickly on, um, how do we work with cleaning neighbourhoods and how do we make the most out of traffic management? Generally speaking, in highways, there's re, there's, there's strong collaborative working. When I close a road or when Baz closes a road, we invite everybody. Because we understand that that's disruption to the residents. It's a lot of money to close a road. It's a lot of money to put traffic management out there. So the world and his oyster is invited to join us. That's not the case elsewhere. Um, I've never been invited to a closure outside highways and transportation, which is disappointing. Um, we have, um, so, yeah, when it's our closure, we will invite sweeping, we will invite litter picking, we will invite, um, who else do we invite? We, we do invite, we, 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 yeah, yeah, I mean, you can come and join us if you want, yeah. We, um, I, I, I completely agree with the collaborative work and it's the way forwards and it's, there's definitely something I advocate.
Very brief follow-up and it's not a question, it's just to say perhaps through this community committee and through yourself, we need to write to the chief highways officer to encourage more of that. It's a big expense to this council. Anything we can do to save public money is going to be a good thing.
You must have been reading my mind, councillor Robinson. You wouldn't want to, no. Thank you. Right, well, Eleanor and Baz, thank you so much for that. Thank you for the report which was comprehensive and did exactly what I asked you to do. So thank you very much for that. And I think you've, you've tried really hard to answer all the questions that you've had this evening. So thank you very much. I hope it wasn't too intimidating for you, your first community committee. But thank you very much. You're obviously welcome to stay, but you're also entitled to leave. Thank you. Thank you. So we're now moving on to, um, agenda item ten, which is highways need safe roads vision zero. So, um, it's Rosie and Becky. Thank you.
Sorry about that. Thank you for bearing with me. Um, thank you for inviting, um, letting us come and, and, um, tell you about Vision Zero. Um, Vision Zero is the new road safety strategy that was adopted in October of last year. And to put it into context, between twenty seventeen and twenty twenty one, there were seven thousand one hundred and six collisions across Leeds. There were ninety-three fatalities, two thousand and seventeen serious injuries and seven thousand and thirty-four slight injuries. So why do we need a vision zero? The figures are very compelling, as I've just explained. The graph that you can see on the screen shows that up until about twenty thirteen, figures were dropping, casualty statistics were slowing down, um, the number of deaths, the number of serious injuries were declining. Figures have start, those figures have now started to plateau and definitely since Covid, we've started to see a rise again. So the, the bottom graph shows that rise in twenty twenty one and twenty twenty two. And that's, this is just the casualties for Leeds. We had, this has to stop. No loss of life is acceptable. And Vision Zero comes from the ethical position that there will be no deaths or serious injuries on roads in Leeds by twenty forty. That is an ambitious target, but that is the target that we are working towards. Um, in the outer north east over the last five years, there have been five hundred collisions resulting in thirteen fatalities. Hundred, my battery's about to die. Um, thirteen fatalities, a hundred and thirty-four serious injuries and five hundred and seventy-two slight injuries. Um, we can break that down even further by ward for you. That is just the entire north east side. Um, if you needed us to, we could send that on further, further for you. I have got one. I just didn't want to break up. I had a full battery an hour ago, which is slightly worrying, slightly worrying. Should have mixed the words. Sorry about that. It's all right. Now we've got our technical problems. Certainly. We actually have it on the slide, but it's just a little bit further on for you. But I can repeat it absolutely. So for the outer east, outer north east, sorry, there were thirteen fatalities. Yep, a hundred and thirty-four serious injuries and five hundred and seventy-two slight injuries. And that is over the same period I quoted, five, seven, two. Slight injuries. So that is over that period that I quoted, twenty seventeen to twenty twenty one. Okay. So Vision Zero rejects traditional casualty data statistics. The only acceptable number to us is zero. And we have changed the way that we approach road safety in that respect to some of the language that we use. So we, we're, we're coming away from the idea that you can teach or compel people to behave the way they should do on roads. We, we, we understand, we want to be able to prevent mistakes, but if they do happen, they do not need to necessarily end in serious harm or a fatality. So the safe system approach in talks, there's a change in language which I will talk about. It accepts people make mistakes, that people are fragile, do need to be protected. It, it takes, there is a number of people involved with that. Everyone holds responsibility for it. It's not just the road user. It's not just the vehicle, the vehicle drivers. Um, it's a system, we, we look at building safer roads. And eventually we'll, what we are hoping for is zero fatalities and serious injuries. But who can deliver Vision Zero? Well, it's everyone by taking responsibility and following the highway code responsibly. Um, lead city council by its road design, traffic management, transport strategy, public health, education. We also want to lead by example with our fleet services, our own vehicles, and also with taxi and private hire that runs throughout the city. We also will, the, the change in the approach is it's a, it's a wider partnership, working with West Yorkshire Police, West, West Yorkshire Fire and Rescue, National Highways, the NHS, ambulance service and road safety charities. So the partnerships that are actually involved in Vision Zero, we operate a number of operations with the police um, to help with enforcement and road safety initiatives, one of which being Operation Spark, which is where we funded overtime for policing areas where the data has shown us that additional police presence would help in, in areas such as antisocial driving. Or Operation Snap, which is the portal where drivers, cyclists, motorcyclists are encouraged to upload dash cam footage to a secure police portal with which they can actually, and the police can then review that to see, you know, to see if that was something that could actually result in an enforcement. Um, the Safety Camera Partnership, we also follow the behaviour, the national behaviour change campaigns. We also target our communications. We obviously, and we, we, we provide education in schools. We provide, but we also look at funding bids and other ways of reporting that data. So Vision Zero operates a safe system, five pillars, and they are safe speeds, safe roads, safe vehicles, safe behaviours and people, and also post collision learning and care. And our delivery plan follows these five pillars. And the idea being that if one of them fails, the others act as a safety net to hopefully reduce the risk to others. And they feed into our strategic objectives, our overarching aims and our action plan, which is a very wide-ranging and overarching action plan. We, one of the first things we've done as part of Vision Zero is we've adopted the fatal five, not the fatal four, and they ask, so they, those are the factors that, that can cause a collision, speed, distractions, drink and drug driving, seatbelt non-compliance and careless driving. We also have changed the language. We're very focused on coming away from using the term accident when talking about a collision or a crash. We talk about victims. We want to personalise an accident. Um, and you, you know, it's about not saying it was a BMW driver or a Mercedes driver. It's a driver of vehicle that's caused the harm. And that, that's where we want, we want to get to. Um, the highway code updates have helped us with that. In January twenty-two, the highway code was updated and changed and emphasised that the hierarchy of road users, so the most vulnerable. The ones that are most at risk are at the top of the actual slide. And the, the idea being that the, those of us who drive cars, we, we, we're most likely to cause harm. And we take responsibility for all road users. So that was the sort of thoughts behind that. In February twenty-three, um, West Yorkshire Police and West Yorkshire Safety Camera Partnership republished the revised, I can't speak, revised safety camera criteria. And the headlines from that really, the press, um, did, did hit on the, the second one there, which was warning signage is not always present. There are no plans to remove any warning signage, but new sites, they wouldn't necessarily put up new signs. Um, there's also additional flexibility in the sighting of safety cameras. Um, and it's, it means that we're able to tackle emerging issues, not waiting for a fatality, but actually reacting to what the data is telling us. Um, West Yorkshire Safety Camera Partnership are actually ahead, um, of the DFT review. So it was a good piece of work that had gone into that in February twenty-three. What we're already doing, what you may already be aware of, um, are the infrastructure changes, the speed limit changes, um, pedestrian cycle crossing reviews, the safety camera criteria I've just mentioned. There is also the speed indication devices that we loan out. Um, they are the fixed lamp posts, um, they're those ones that committees buy, but we also loan out, um, mobile SIDS, which we can help, um, that can be loaned from us to, to provide targeted on, um, speed awareness rates in, in local areas. Um, we do monitor the road safety collision data analysis and it really does help us identify current and emerging issues as they affect Leeds. Um, we're obviously working in the partnership. Um, but we also work across all council departments to influence road safety decisions. We want Vision Zero to be adopted council-wide. And I'm working hard to do that. Um, and we also look at other interventions and trials that would help us achieve that, any new technology that could come on, on the market. Um, we also participate in and promote with awareness raising events and campaigns such as the Project Edward launch, which is the Every Day Without a Road Death, which we did in October to coincide with the Vision Zero launch. We actively promote Tire Safety Month, um, Break Road Safety Week, um, can provide child car seat advice. And that's something we want to get back into doing. Um, we provide travel planning support. There are, and you will have noticed some around the city, the video messaging boards that provide road safety messaging across the city. They are targeted messages that are, that tie in with national road safety campaigns and the police calendar as well. We do provide and will continue to provide school-based road safety lessons, mainly in primary schools, but we would like to get in more secondary schools around pedestrian training, scooter training. We provide classroom-based lessons. We also provide bike ability, cycling proficiency as was. Um, we also promote the Bike Register, which is around the security of bikes. Um, we also do citywide and targeted comms using radio advertising, the blog, um, connecting Leeds blog, social media. And there are also resources that we can provide, such as the wheelie bin stickers that a number of councillors have ordered in the past. We can provide school gate parking leaflets and other child car seat information. So how can you help us achieve Vision Zero? I've mentioned following the highway code. Um, promoting Vision Zero at community level, sharing on your social media platforms, joining the conversation. And sometimes those conversations might be difficult, but it's getting those messages out there that we, that we are committed to this. Raising awareness and spreading messages to family and friends. Um, providing, providing any information, we can provide information on the highway code, e-scooters, which are still currently illegal across Leeds, and about road safety charities and the support they can provide. Promote Operation Snap. There is a link on there if, if that would be useful. Um, and also inform and encourage educational settings to take us up on our road safety offer. Um, inform us of community events and help us spread our messages through your communication channels and, you know, and we can then support with those as well. Your support is very welcome to us. And on the, there's some contacts there and links to use the, the things that I've already mentioned. But I've also, we've also put together a list of the schools receiving road safety training in the last two academic years across your wards. Tends to mainly be primary schools. We've, we've done a few things at secondary school, but this is mainly a list of primary schools. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much for that. Um, I have questions from councillor Cohen and then councillor, uh, first. Councillor Cohen.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for that report. Um, I'm struggling to work out what has actually changed or what's different. Um, because of course, if anybody was asked at any stage, what's your target for road casualties? We'd have always said, well, we'd like it to be zero. Uh, in fact, when I first joined council, maybe thirteen years ago, the scrutiny board I first sat on, I'm going somewhere with this. Uh, actually had, um, very, thank you, actually had road casualties as one of its, uh, measures. It's one of the things we looked at and we said the exact same thing thirteen years ago. So I'm trying to work out what is new in this strategy. So what I'm wondering is whether, so at the moment, if any of us want to see an intervention on a particular road, we have to evidence that there have been casualties on that road. Uh, and only on the basis of those casualties will some mitigation take place. Now I'm going to take a wild stab in the dark, uh, that all of us elected members would be able to point to roads in our wards that we know are dangerous. That, but for the grace of God, there has not yet been an accident or a serious accident. And yet because of the absence of that data, we can't have any mitigation take place. So is that now different? Could we now have some kind of mitigation that would make the road safer? Or is it still the case that highways will say, or councillor Cohen, actually that's a really safe road, but I'll say it's not. And I'll say, well, in the past five years, there've been no injury accidents. Or can't speak out loud. That's a good answer that.
Um, just picking up on the first point in terms of, of what's changed. Um, I think, I agree. I think everybody would always say zero would be what, what we're looking at. Um, but traditionally we have had targets in
And but traditionally, we have had targets in place for a reduction in casualties. So rather than it being zero as the ultimate target, there's always been a target for, for next year, we'd like to reduce it by X percent, or by the end of next year, we'd like it to be a certain number. Whereas now we're saying, it, it may be a gradual process, but ultimately we need to be aiming for zero. So that's, that's the aim.
All right, I must come back on that because with respect, this council's brilliant at setting targets that it never, ever meets. So in that regard, respectfully, nothing's changed. We've always wanted it to be zero. It's just went right now, rather than say, you know, we've never said, oh, only three people died last year. That's tremendous. We've never said that. So I, I, I understand what you're saying, when I were explicitly saying that we must get to zero. I don't think that's new unless there's some real machinery behind it, which I'm hoping will be coming in the next answer.
Sorry, but, um, what, what I can say is we are looking at our mechanisms to try and build some of that into our systems, the pedestrian crossing review. And is one thing, I know in the past we have the, the approach you're talking about, budgets are finite, but I do know that we are in, if there is a road that you want us to look at again, we would absolutely encourage you to, to email us to look at that again.
Again, there's another, I can put any single road, anywhere in my ward, our ward, sorry, um, on a future review for pedestrian crossing. I can put any road down for a traffic regulation order. I can put a request for a review of speed limits. I can request any of those things now. But absenting some robust accident data, there's less than no chance of those being delivered. Has that altered, or does that position remain fundamentally the same?
It is, it is a data driven, so we, we are trying to target those areas with most need.
Thank you, Chair. We appreciate this, you know, it takes a lot of effort and these are big projects. The problem is, there's a big time between now and twenty forty. Uh, I've been on a meeting today about mass transit for Leeds and the recent consultation is the fact of the Vision twenty forty. And the one problem we've got there is the fact that are we not being ambitious enough? Because it seems as councillor Cohen has also said, that we just seem to be having the same aim. And then ten years later, we've still got the same aim, but we aren't making any further progress. And it would be interesting to hear, particularly when you mentioned the figures between twenty seventeen and twenty twenty one, in particular, is there actually any correlation between particular sites, particular areas, particular roads, that are actually having the majority of those injuries or even potential fatalities. And there are two things that I just want to raise. One of them is the fact that a lot of my residents, even though we have a rural ward, are racing with me increasingly. The amount of off-road bikes, e-scooters and various antisocial behaviour, sort of vehicles, as you could put it, being used in the area, and nothing seems to be done about it. And unfortunately, that is something whereby we think if we're leaving it at the moment now, by the time we get to twenty forty, if we don't have the proper enforcement now, we're going to be in a very different situation and just going to have to accept the situation by then. And I think the other big question comes, if, if we're being led by the data, we have a massive new dual carriageway that's just been built as a scar through our ward, the East Leeds Orbital Road, that road has a fifty, fifty limit on it. We argued at the time that it should be higher, uh, but we have got serious problems with bikes, with speeding, with everything. And just simply because no one has yet had a very serious, or none of the accidents yet have been classed or come back to us to have said they've been serious enough to have cameras, there are serious issues that are happening on that road. And to me, it just seems that without there actually being anything, whenever somebody comes to me and asks, what are we going to do about it? I say to them, I don't know. Because we've argued for this and we're not getting anything from it. So in terms of that situation, uh, it seems that even with a brand new, brand spanking dual carriageway, we're still not even thinking far ahead to try and make sure that we limit the amount of accidents that happen on there, or even potentially look at what the consequences would be of providing it. And I just wondered if you had any further comments on that. Thank you.
Uh, if I pick up the, the first point in terms of cor- correlation and particular roads and, um, we have identified in the strategy where, where the killed or fatal and serious injuries have occurred across Leeds. And so there's a map of that within the strategy. Our traffic management and collision studies team as well, they undertake a study each year of where collisions are taking place. And they, they develop a lengths and sites for concern and a cluster analysis document, which outlines those, those places and each location is then ranked in terms of the traffic management programme for that year. So if you'd like me to get more further details on that to you, I can get that to you. Uh, I think that is on our, on the website and available to view, I can send that through. And in terms of the off-road bike team, Operation Spark, which was mentioned by Rosie, uh, is an operation where locations were identified through looking at non-insured drivers, but also looking at reports that went to the police for antisocial vehicle use. And, and that is continuing, we've got a report to go back to highways board for that to continue. So if there are particular locations in relation to that, that you would like us to pass on for the police for consideration, then again, we can look at that.
I'll be quick, Chair. No, no, I think the biggest thing I can say is the whole of the new East Leeds Orbital Road for one. And coming off it, particularly going in from sort of Seacraft and Cross Gates, and effectively we are having an absolute bombardment in terms of the amount of bikes that are on there. The scheme has just literally opened a few months ago and parts of it are being ripped up and destroyed just simply by bikes. We've then had a few weeks ago, a situation where, um, a number of young lads were involved in a, a crash, which they, we believe they were driving, I'm not going to make any suspicions, but we believe they were driving erratically and crashed into a vehicle. Uh, and unfortunately then ended up in hospital. Um, and that is one particular case that we are awaiting a briefing on from others uh, higher up to make sure that we can actually say, well, look, we've got serious issues here and what are we going to do with it? I, I think the biggest problem we've got is that we as a particular ward in Herewood, and I'm sure it's the same for Wetherby, and it's the same particularly for all Wardley, given the closeness to the city, is the fact that we've got a lot of country roads, we've got a lot of areas to, a lot of racetrack for people to be chased on. And I think as a result, effectively, if they're going to get out there, they're not going to be caught. But the problem is if we can solve it back at the source, uh, and tackle the new racetrack that we've created, then that would be certainly helpful. I think the biggest concern that we've got is the fact that residents are saying to us, you know, if we went and did that, we'd probably be caught. And the fact is, if we allow it to continue to happen, it's just going to get worse and worse. I appreciate, we all feel the same, it doesn't matter which political colour you are, whatever background, whether you're an officer, whether you're a councillor. The fact is, if we don't do anything about it, it's just going to be acceptable in the future and we can't get anywhere. Uh, but it would be certainly interesting to see, because the final question I was going to ask is very quickly, there has been the policy announced by the West Yorkshire Deputy Mayor for Policing and Crime about the roving cameras. Will that be based on the partnership data, or will that be something whereby we can have an influence about where that can be?
Perhaps we can find out that information.
Yeah, that would be something I'd have to come back to you on, just to make sure. Yeah, I'll come back on that one.
Okay, we have councillor Robinson and then councillor Richards and then councillor Buckley.
Thanks, Chair. Um, because the number of speakers, I'll try to be brief. Um, I mean, there's people who make mistakes, you know, people do thirty-three, thirty-five and a thirty. You know, I'm not excusing it, but I can understand that that happens. People who do seventy in a thirty, perhaps a lobotomy might be something that's more akin to stop them speeding. However, that's beyond the powers of this council. What is not is the fact that Operation Spark is in place and we as councillors have paid to fund Operation Spark. When it sounds like it should be Leeds City Council that's paying to do Operation Spark. I'm using limited wellbeing budget to have to bring that forward to fund it because it's a priority for residents in my area. But it feels like, and it sounds like, and you'll correct me if I'm wrong, that other areas are getting that service for free and we're not. So I, I'd want some clarification on that, if I may. Second, the question was read by councillor Cohen about data and SIDS. I think I'm the longest-serving councillor here on this committee, I think. And I reckon, and I reckon that, well, here today, and I reckon that I've spent more money in terms of through wellbeing budget on road safety priorities through different schemes in that time than on anything else, including Sid data. That Sid data that we've got in just about every parish is shared and nothing happens on the back of it. So my concern for question two is, if councillor Cohen's in a situation where he doesn't have enough data to be able to get intervention, I'm in a situation where I've got plenty of data, but I still don't get intervention. So what's the threshold for something else to happen then? Because that's a serious concern. And then finally, Chair, um, the revised safety camera criteria that's come in. Um, I've been banging the drum with officers and West Yorkshire Police for a long, long time that some speed cameras are needed in our area and that we have, we've, there's need for that and the data's got to be on that. The F D eight in Skarkraft is a prime example where we've had two deaths in the last twelve months. The A six five nine in Collingham, uh, we've got a primary school on there. We've almost had on two separate occasions, kids knocked down while crossing the road. Not crossing the road because they've managed to get away from mum and dad and wandered into the road, but there's this crossing and people are ignoring the crossing and speeding through it and have almost hit children. In those two situations, I've been told councillor Stevenson was with me at a meeting, we were told we might have to fund the speed camera from, again, the already limited wellbeing budget that we've got in place. So it's, it beggars the question, it simply is not working, the budget that's in place that you're talking about to be able to deliver the priorities that would save lives in my ward? Or have I got the wrong end of the stick?
Um, I've missed the first question, so I may have to come back to that one. I've not written that one down. Um, in terms of, of, uh, SIDS and the data, we'll have to take that back to the traffic management team and they, they're the ones that collate all that data. So we'll take that back to them. Um, in terms of locations, we do, with the new safety camera criteria, there is the flexibility to look at different locations. So it may be that they are locations that could be considered under that new criteria, which may not have met the previous criteria.
I appreciate there's lots of questions. I think perhaps there's a follow-up conversation to have had outside of this meeting here. My slight concern is that there's budget that's in place and it's not being realised or seen to have an intervention in the outer north east, which should be having an intervention. Uh, the first question was about, um, uh, Operation Spark as well. And, and it seems there's a bit of double dipping that's going on here. Um, and I think there's probably a conversation that we need to have outside of this committee to bring a future report back and understand that a little bit more. And I'm fully on side with the officers, this isn't me being rigorous just for the sake of it. It's because I want to get it right because I want to save lives.
Fully appreciate that. And if there is a conversation to be had, absolutely, we, we would, we would welcome that. Yeah.
Councillor Richards. Thank you, Chair. Um, we've already had conversations about safer schools. Um, and, uh, in some ways, they exemplify what we've just been talking about, which is the fact that, um, I would agree, at the moment, we are data driven and at the moment, we are also finance dependent. If we want mitigation, as has already been raised several times, it depends on the money. And it also depends on the way in which the mitigation might be arrived at and the amount of money that might need to be spent to do something important. We've talked about the fact that, you know, um, certain areas are not seen as priorities because they don't have that data. And one of the other things is that we've talked about schools. And I've talked about to you that I've got some of the most unsafe school areas I can think of. And all three of them that we discussed are, we have that phrase, accidents waiting to happen. So the question is, how are we going to make those mitigations actually occur? When you have highway saying it is not a priority, and I quote. So that's partly down to you. And if you have that in your pillars of actually making it happen, then I'm afraid that is something that I think we'll have to have further conversations to actually look at how those very lord of blames are there in this way. And I think that if we then go back to SIDS, then I think the, the other thing I would say is, you're right about the amount of money that's spent on them or spent on them to order them. We are now, the ones I know in two villages that were ordered in February twenty-two are still not in place. Now, that's another way in which I think your offices would be helpful in actually making those come into place. Because you're right, the data does inform and you're right, it does help to actually make everybody, residents, highways, everybody aware of it. So those are the two things. One, are we going to actually get some more money on this one in different ways from highways? And secondly, SIDS, then we need them. So please, can we have those?
I think what we need to do is if they're the ones that have been ordered, we'll take that back to traffic to try and find out what's happened to them because they, they, they've definitely got lost in the past. Um, and with regards absolutely to the final, and this is a conversation we do need to have around how we can best meet the needs of the area, absolutely. But, yeah.
Yes. Councillor Buckley.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I brought this up before, actually. Um, how many meetings or how much influence do you have with the police? Because it seems to me that the one thing that I can think of which would improve road safety is not allowing drivers to use mobile phones. Now, I know it's against the law and all this, but you've only got to come into town and stop at the lights and look across at the car next to you and he or she will be on the phone. And if they're not talking on it, they're tapping away, writing a text. And I'm just wondering, how often do you meet the police and do you speak to them about this? Because I've spoken to them and they say, oh, well, you know, you have to see it and you have to film it and God knows what. And you can feel that the heart's not in it. And how, how could this be altered so that that, this is stopped?
So in terms of formal meetings with the police, we, West Yorkshire Police are part of the Safe Roads Partnership. So we meet on a formal basis at least every six weeks for the partnership. Um, and that's where issues such as this and the action plan for Vision Zero are discussed. Um, we also have less formal meetings with them on a more regular basis. Um, it was, it was a surprise to us when, when Operation Spark first launched that there weren't as many drivers being dealt with for mobile phone or distraction. Um, offences, because we thought that that would be a really highly rated offence. But it's because of the reasons that, that you mentioned, it's, it's not as easy perhaps to, to see a driver on the mobile phone as it is to see one who's not wearing a seatbelt. So seatbelt offences were ones that they were tending to, to deal with drivers for more regularly. Um, so it is something that, it is part of the fatal five. It is one of those areas that do need to be tackled as part of the, the action plan. We have been looking at things that have been taking place in other areas in the country to, to tackle mobile phone use, and that's something that we'll continue to, to explore for Leeds and for West Yorkshire.
Okay, thank you very much, colleagues. Can I just ask a question, please? You've, you've mentioned quite a lot about reported accidents, reported incidents, et cetera. Where do you actually get the data from? Because I have residents saying to me, oh, well, you know, well, who are we supposed to report it to? Because there was a near miss on that roundabout again, or there was a near miss on the bridge at Wetherby or, or whatever. But, but who is it that they are supposed to report a near miss to? Is there something on the website for Leeds City Council that says this is where you should report it to highways or to yourself? Or are they supposed to report every near miss to the police? And that's the bit that I think is missing, that if residents knew how to report those near misses, then your data is going to take a huge leap and you might have better informed data to say, well, these are the, the accidents waiting to happen.
Yeah, so the, the data that we've quoted today is, is from actual injury collisions. So that's where the police have attended or where it's been reported to a police station after the event. So that, that's actually where an injury has taken place. The thing that we do need to, and again, we've recognised, we need to have a better picture of everything else that is happening. So one of the actions that we've got in the action plan is for those reporting mechanisms and for people to be able to, to report those. Uh, and that's something that we'll be looking at in the next twelve. And that's something that we'll be looking at in the next 12 to 18 months for, for a system where people can report those near misses. So we can build up that picture.
And let's suggest that maybe you bring that a little bit forward and not do the 12 to 18 months. Let's do the six to 12. That will be helpful.
Yeah.
Thank you. And then the other point that I've got really is about engaging with parish councils. I think it would probably be an idea for at some point in the future for you to come along to a parish council forum meeting. And then you could actually deliver some of that information to them to say, this is how you can report stuff. This is what we would like you to do. And then they'll be at the, at the coalface, if you see what I mean. Okay. But thank you very much for attending this evening. You're quite welcome to go. We've only got a couple of items left to deal with, so thank you very much. Right. And as we iniquor at the beginning of the meeting, we left the minutes and masses arising. And I'd like to take those now, please. So would somebody please say whether the, yeah, we've got proposed a second that the minutes were fine? Thank you for that, Toby. And are there any masses arising from the minutes? Everybody's shaking their head, so that's no, thank you very much. Agenda item 11 then is the update report. Has anybody got any questions on the update report that you actually want to ask Preet? Because she's not going to sit and read it. No, everybody's shaking their head, so that's fine. Is there anything that you particularly wanted to raise, Preet?
Please, Chair. Just, I've got four headlines. The first one is the environmental subgroup meeting. I just wanted to say that over the last year or 18 months, we've had some really good, positive and productive meetings. We have a number of services who attend and it's been a great forum for cross-service and sharing best practice. And I just wanted to open it out to either the councillors, if they wanted to just say some comments on the back of that. But I found them to be really useful. Councillor Richards, Buckley or First, if you wanted to add anything to those?
I don't think I want to add anything other than to underline, I think the fact of getting all of the offices there is actually really helpful. Because what happens, and we've seen it, is that they actually reflect on things which would help the whole delivery process by working together, by actually cooperating in their endeavours in that way. So I think that to me is the positive aspect of it that I've come from.
I couldn't improve on that at all. And it's obviously a reflection of the chairmanship at the stand with.
Congratulations, councillor Richards. Councillor Robinson, did you want to come in at that?
I did note Preet said the last 18 months, which was when I left that committee. And no longer chaired it, which is, which, which is, which is, is nice to know. Just, I know that Sam Worsany, who's been a member of the committee and had been heavily involved, has had a really important role to play. And I think probably thanks from this committee to Sam for his work, but also stressing that it's essential. We have somebody from Parks there, given the arium and its propensity to serve our area.
Councillor First.
I'd like to second what councillor Robinson just said, because I was going to say exactly the same. And I would like to also thank the arium for their hospitality over previous months, whether we continue there or not, simply because it's a very good place to make sure that all the staff members feel very comfortable being able to get there and also being able to make sure they can be in an honest and frank discussion to deliver for residents, especially when we've got issues ranging from our bins to everything to do with fly to be. Thank you.
Great.
Thanks, Chair, and thanks councillors. Sorry, councillor First, do you just want to repeat that again?
I'd also like to thank Preet for her sturdy, sturdy steering of the ship, environmental subgroup.
Okay. So the next headline is the Millennium Green Wellbeing Project. This project was funded by the Hereward councillors. It started back in 2021, but due to a number of delays, the benches have now been installed. There will be an unveiling on the 25th of March at, at noon, if anybody wants to, to turn up. The other two headlines, oh.
I just want to say, Chair, because my colleagues and I had a, a visit on Saturday, despite the snow, to see the, the benches in situ. And I just think it's worth noting that for everybody else, they're actually accessible benches. So they look rather odd to look at, but they sort of extend about two feet beyond the end. So anybody with a wheelchair or pram, for example, can come up to them. I just want to spot on record, I think they've been very well received in our communities and they're worth exploring in other communities as well for our constituents who are less able-bodied.
Thank you. So the other two headlines is basically we are going to, two meetings taking place this week. Tomorrow, we're going to have the Leeds Festival Working Group. So we're going to start that back up again and have conversations with Leeds Festival to see how we can make it safe for attendees and residents. And then on Wednesday, we have a town and parish council forum. And it's a single item agenda to discuss the Leeds local plan 2040. So busy week this week.
Thank you, Preet. So the financial report, Preet?
Thanks, Chair. Yeah, the finance report, so we've got a number of projects. The first one I'll discuss is wellbeing and it's paragraph 20, the Slade Hill additional seat for a thousand pounds. Yep, approved. And then the next one is Leeds Rhino Summer Camp for Wetherby, eight thousand 225 pounds.
Councillor Richards, we're happy with that. Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you. And then moving on to page 11. Paragraph 28, it's Skarcroft Junior Cricket Club, 2,400 pounds towards one qualified cricket coach. And then 28, Shadowwell Tea Time Tennis, 2,000 pounds towards coaching. 29, Leeds Rhino Summer Camp, Wetherby, 1,725. That's to come, these projects are all to come out of youth activity.
Yeah, that's fine.
And then the final one is Mini Breeze, Wetherby, 3,800 for Breeze in the Park.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So the final agenda item is dates, times and venues of the community committees for 23, 24, not 34. Could you please introduce that?
Thank you, Chair. It's just a short report to propose the dates, times and venues for the community, community committee for the next municipal year. So we've got Monday, the 3rd of July, 2023 at 5:30pm. Monday, the 18th of September, 2023 at 5:30pm. Monday, the 11th of December, 2023 at 5:30pm. And Thursday, the 21st of March, 2024 at 5:30pm. The intention is to hold the committee meetings in this room ticking seven. And the March 2024 meeting is proposed on a Thursday as opposed to the usual Monday due to a venue clash. So if members have any comments on the proposed or any proposed changes, they are welcome now. Otherwise, you're asked to consider the options detailed within the report and to consider and agree the committee's meeting schedule for the next municipal year. Thank you.
Have you got a question, councillor?
It did, I do, Chair. Are we not on the road again for these meetings? I know we've previously done that, but is it due to the live stream?
The, the issue is the live stream, yeah. It's been very, very problematic to try to get it from a security aspect about people coming. That's what they've been told, we've been told from governance, so. Have you got any further information about that?
To be fair, if you wanted to propose and hold them in the, in the community, that'd work as well. We'd just have to work out the arrangements with getting a technician in there and stuff like that. But it's worked for, I think, a couple of others. But obviously, it's easiest for live streaming, et cetera, to hold them in this room.
Councillor Cowan.
You look devastated, I was going to say something. You will be in a minute. I go for 15 minutes. Why do we have to live stream now? I didn't think we did have to live stream anymore. We can now invite members of the public to attend in person, which is far better than watching us virtually. I feel we're far better organically. And more likely to be attended if we're actually in the community rather than the, the in smoke, as they say.
I think the issue as far as community chairs, the community chairs committee forum was concerned, was that the idea was that the live streaming actually got to a wider audience. So there are people who do watch the live stream and can actually watch it afterwards and they would get that information. And now historically, how many people have actually attended a community committee meeting? Well, but that's, that's something we can discuss. And if you want to carry that forward, then we can have a look at it. It might be worth, Toby, if we could get the stats for the number of people who have actually watched the live streaming over the last year.
I'll be, I'll be able to get them stats. We've been working on some webcast assistive stuff, so I'll be able to pull them out.
And we were just saying, and we've said it before, but across the three wards, there are, there are secondary schools, which we can access and have wifi. Jewish Free School, I'm sure the, the newly rated outstanding Boston Spar Academy would be, would be up to hosting as well if we asked.
Thank you. So are we content with the dates of the next meetings as long as we work out venues? Yes. Okay, thank you very much. So thank you very much for your attendance and that's the end of the meeting.